Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of Bedford City Council. If you would please rise, join me, gentlemen, remove your hats. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Cochee?
Here.
Spinks?
Here.
Janudas?
Here.
Blueheartie?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Gansbury?
Here.
Saunders?
Here.
Uh, council, you have the minutes of the work session of July 5th, 2022. Any corrections? Seeing none, motion for acceptance by Gansbury, second by Saunders. Call the roll, please.
Cochee?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Blueheartie?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Gansbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
And you have the minutes of the regular meeting of July 5th, 2022. Any corrections to that? Seeing none, a motion for acceptance by Spinks. Technical difficulties. Get started.
No.
Motion for acceptance of the regular meeting minutes by Spinks, second by Blueheartie. Call the roll, please.
Cochee?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Blueheartie?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Gansbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
We have no presentations to make. And under Old Business Ordinance Number 9983-22.
An ordinance declaring improvements to certain real property within the city of Bedford to be for a public purpose, declaring such property to be exempt from real property taxation, requiring annual statutory service payments in lieu of taxes, creating an urban redevelopment tax increment equal equivalent fund for the deposit of such statutory service payments, authorizing the execution of service agreements in a cooperative agreement and declaring emergency.
And indeed a motion for suspension by Spinks, second by Janudas. Call the roll, please.
Cochee?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Blueheartie?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Gansbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Motion for third and final. Saunders, second by Smith. Mike, Jennifer, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yes, this is an ordinance regarding, uh, that we've been talking about for some time, Tinker's Creek Commerce Park. Uh, this is the TIF, uh, the Tax Increment Financing Component that is going to assist in the redevelopment of the property in the industrial park. Uh, basically, the city has agreed, um, following the closures and sale of the properties to the end users, uh, we will be, uh, entering into a non-school TIF. The city will be foregoing, uh, future property tax payments. Um, those payments that we would typically receive will be redirected to Calhoun County until the original loan that was due to the county, uh, is paid in full. Um, this has been, uh, even though it does not affect the Bedford City schools, we did, uh, share this information with them, shared it with the end users, Calhoun County Land Bank. Uh, this is the primary component that is enabling, um, all of us, uh, to get this property moving and, uh, for redevelopment.
Good. Getting moving on that property would be good. Call the roll, please.
Cochee?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Blueheartie?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Gansbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Under reports, I think I will start off first. A reminder that our State of the City address will be on August 30th, uh, at Ellenwood Rec Center. Well, more will be coming out about that, just so we can mark your calendars for the highlight of your evening. Yeah, August, well, no, it'd be an afternoon. August 30th at Ellenwood for State of the City. Since I got the floor out, the movie night that was held down at, uh, on the Commons this past, uh, Friday was attended very well. I want to give kudos to the Recreation Department for putting that together. Huge outdoor screen and the, the Commons was loaded with people and kids. And it was really neat to see kids and parents together at a function. And the kids were out playing, not getting into trouble, not bothering people, but they were actually playing, having fun before the movie started and, uh, um, it was good to see. It was a very good thing for the city to see all this happening. And again, kudos to the Recreation Department, uh, Mike Callahan, the director, and Sarah Canati that, uh, helped out with this and, uh, they did a great job. It was well attended and to the popcorn people. Sandy and Marilyn Treziak who, uh, went through a lot of popcorn that night. So it was nice movie and popcorn. It was absolutely perfect night to watch the movie and, uh, I'd say it was just a great thing to see families out there enjoying something together. And, um, also a reminder tomorrow's, uh, voting day. Don't forget to go out and vote. I don't think there's a lot on the ballot, but that's our right and privilege to, um, do that. And with that, we will get into reports. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. So a couple items, um, we, as we just mentioned, the Tinker's Creek Commerce Park. For those of you that don't know, the city, uh, took ownership of all that property a few months back. Um, at the end of July, we did finalize, uh, the sale on five acres, uh, to Art of Beauty. Art of Beauty is purchasing, um, the five acres for an expansion of their facility. So that is one, uh, component, one end user that I had just mentioned. Uh, and the second end user, um, is a developer that we hope to close, uh, on the remaining 25 acres. That should close sometime in July, or I'm sorry, sometime in August. So we'll hopefully have more information, uh, for that to come out once it does close. And then fingers crossed, we'll start seeing, uh, start seeing redevelopment. It's been a long time coming. I just want to thank obviously Jennifer and Frank and John and, and all of council and the mayor for the support, uh, getting this project moving. Definitely some hurdles.
And for you for spearheading this, uh, you did a tremendous job there. Mike, and the rest of them.
Thank you. Just looking ahead at a couple of projects that we're actually talking about now, uh, even though they're years down the road, um, we did have a discussion with, uh, ODOT officials, uh, regarding Union Street Bridge. Uh, that bridge is set to be, um, rebuilt. Uh, a new bridge is going to be constructed there in 2024. We're a ways away, but that roadway will be closed at minimal six months. Uh, to be, to be honest, I think it's going to be substantially longer, but they believe it'll be, it'll be done in six months. Um, we will be continuing discussions with them and then as we get close, we'll continue to provide more information. Secondly, we are, uh, we were successful in acquiring a $200,000 grant for Turney Road. Um, and that roadway will be set for resurfacing in 2024 as well. Uh, so that is a county grant that our staff was able to, to secure. Um, and then obviously we'll have more of those discussions, um, as we're into next year. Our focus next year will be on Broadway. Um, as you can see, the contractor is moving along. Curbs were installed on one side of the roadway, uh, today. Um, they'll be working on the other side of the street. We hope to have that buttoned up, uh, in the coming months. And then obviously in the spring, uh, ODOT will be coming through resurfacing all of Broadway from corp limit to corp limit. One of the concerns, uh, that we've, we've talked about for, for months, probably over months, almost a year, um, a couple of topics. And one of those topics is obviously traffic safety, speeding, um, stop signs, trash. And what we've done is, you know, we've, we've heard some of those concerns. Um, I've talked to some residents who have provided, um, great information, helpful information, um, as well as, uh, in regards to traffic, I asked our, our police department to look at some of the areas of concern. We moved around our, our speed sensor, um, what that provides us with more accurate data on what some of the streets are where we see more of the heavy speeding. Um, and what we've done is the police department's provided me with a, a report on some of the areas that, uh, we believe where stronger traffic enforcement signage, um, digital signage, flashing, flashing signage, uh, flashing stop signs, um, would be beneficial. Um, we've worked to obtain quotes for those and we're going to be making purchases, um, on all of those in the immediate future. And we intend to get those up as soon as possible. We're looking for additional, um, methods of traffic enforcement that'll help. Um, you know, our responses are up. We're patrolling as we normally patrol, but when our responses are up, sometimes it takes away from those regular areas where we can sit and watch. Uh, but we need to do, we need to look outside the box and these are some of the things that we're looking to do. One of the other pieces that came up was obviously trash, uh, you know, looking at where's some strategic areas where we could place new, uh, additional trash receptacles on various corners, near the high school, uh, near the library, on streets where we see, um, an influx of constant litter. Um, we're going to be in the process, we've secured the quotes and we're going to be purchasing a number of those. Uh, we've reached out to Kimball to see that, how that would, um, impact any collection fees, um, if any, I believe it'll be minimal, um, but we are going to be working to obtain those and install those. So it's another area that it may not solve everything, but we're trying to do some additional matters to, to improve on some of the concerns that we've heard from council, uh, as well as the public. Lastly, I want to talk about the, the news that we received last month regarding, uh, UH, um, Bedford Hospital, University Hospitals decision. Um, just to give everybody a snapshot, um, obviously it's, the news of them closing is very disheartening. We've met with them, uh, members of our staff, mayor, uh, has participated in those meetings. We meet with them like we do other businesses on a monthly basis, um, updates, they provide information to us. Um, you know, we had some concerns at the early part of last year. Um, and we've asked them point blank on many occasions, what is their commitment to Bedford? And they always told us the same thing. They were absolutely committed to this area, committed to Bedford, and there was zero intention whatsoever, um, to close. That was almost exactly their words that they gave us for well over a year. On July 14th, uh, they notified us that they were going to be closing in less than one month. You know, I, I like to say what I really like to say, but I, um, extremely disheartening decision on, uh, that we received. Uh, I will say that, uh, primary focus and our primary concern initially is, uh, you know, the effect on emergency responses even beyond Bedford. Um, it's, it's all of the communities in the southeast side. I can tell you three communities, um, that we know of, ourselves and two others. Um, in the last 18 months, we've had well over, I think, 7,000 runs to that ER. It is an extremely busy emergency room. Um, not to say some of the other communities that utilize that, that area. You know, what I told them and what was disheartening was, University Hospitals collected over $150 million in government aid over the last year and a half during the pandemic. And a decision to close two hospitals, community hospitals is just, you know, it's just unacceptable. We have had consistent, um, communication, um, internally with our safety forces. Uh, we're working to strengthen our, our relationships with our neighboring, uh, communities and how we're going to deal with, uh, those changes, um, in the coming months. And we've also started engaging, um, with discussions with other medical providers, uh, be it Metro, be it Cleveland Clinic, um, and other hospitals in the area. So those discussions, I can assure you have already taken place, have been taking place for weeks. Um, we're going to have more information that's going to be coming out, um, to inform the public of kind of our position and what we're going to be looking for, not only immediately, uh, what we can maybe do, um, but also looking forward, uh, best uses. I, I will say, uh, University Hospitals, uh, did commit to meeting with us again. We have a meeting scheduled next week. We're, we're going to be further discussion, discussing our expectations, which we laid out to them, um, at the meeting when they notified us, uh, of their decision to close. Um, we've, we were aware of, you know, what our expectations would be, um, in case that day ever came. Unfortunately, the day came and we were prepared to let them know our position then, and we did. Where that goes from there and, and that follow-up meeting next week, I think it'll be a lot to, you know, we'll see how their response is, um, and we'll obviously provide, uh, further updates with the community. You know, with that being said, I, I want to make sure the public knows, you know, from a, from an emergency services standpoint, primarily our fire and our EMS, um, you know, we've said it, I'll say it over and over again, you know, we have the best men and women over there. Um, and we're committed to providing and to continue to provide that high level emergency services that we've all been accustomed to receiving. Um, it is basically when they respond, you got a hospital coming to your house. Um, you know, there's challenges that we're going to have to face, there's no doubt about it. But we're committed to providing that high level service. You know, from a financial, and that's, that's our primary focus. You know, obviously looking at it from a financial standpoint, um, there is a financial impact, uh, to that. On the high end, um, and it's too early to tell, but on the high end, it, it could be close to a $900,000, uh, loss in income tax on a, on an annual basis. But again, I think it's, it's too early to tell. We're going to be, we're going to be working through that, trying to get some more solid, uh, numbers. With that being said, I, I want to commend our finance department, city council, the mayor. You know, we've been, you know, prudent with our financial management, um, and we're in a position to where, you know, we are going to continue to provide the excellent services across the board that we've been doing over the years. Um, this isn't knee-jerk reaction type. So we're, we're committed to that. Anything, you know, substantial, we're going to share via here at the, at the public meetings, on social media, on our website. Um, stay tuned for some of that. Uh, there'll be more information that'll come out during the State of the City. Uh, we've communicated with almost all of our, um, elected officials, um, on a county level, on a state level, on a federal level. We've already reached out to Team Neos, Your Jobs Ohio, all of those entities, um, and started having those conversations. So, um, if you're thinking about it or if you think that we should look at this, look at that, I, I can assure you, some of our staff has probably checked that box and are already working on that. So we'll have more information, um, when we're able to do, provide it. And that's all I have tonight. End of report.
Thank you, Mike. And I, I can guarantee you, we're not taking this lane down. We're going to fight to the end to, to do what we can to use that facility as it should be used. But we're, we're looking at every option and like Mike said, we're, we're going to give it our best shot. It is just very troubling to all of us that they could just call up in less than 30 days, oh, by the way, we're closing. They didn't know about it the night before they called us. They had to know about it for months and they waited till 30 days, less than 30 days to tell us that's just not acceptable. We're going to give it our best shot and I think we'll be, we'll be okay in the long run. Mr. Law Director.
Rather than have a report, but I will confirm that everybody's taking this very seriously, looking at all options and everyone's participating. We hope to have some good news for you in the near future. Thanks.
Thank you. And you notice our, uh, new person in the seat over here, uh, that, Mr. Gambosi, who was on vacation and, uh, technically he's still our, our finance director. So Jennifer, I believe the proper term now would be acting, uh, finance director and which will soon be changing that title in a month or month or so. And, uh, but welcome aboard and, and joining us and we look forward to a long tenure having you here with us. And your report.
Thank you, and I would like to echo what, um, John and Mike have said about the hospital and what we can do for that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Frank's words never been short. Good, thank you. Uh, council. Smith, Mr. Smith.
I don't really have any report, but, uh, I'd just like to thank Mike for, um, his attention to, uh, the scene code I was on Cork Hill. Uh, my main concern was the children of this summer playing around that hole. I didn't want them to fall into that hole in the city, incur a lawsuit. So thanks a lot, Mike, um, for, you know, for your attention to that. Also, I'd just like to say, uh, when trying to contact me, please, please, by all means, leave your name, your phone number, address, whatever. Like, I get calls and I don't even know who these people are and I know they're saying, oh, he's calling me and I'm calling him and he's not getting back to me because you don't leave your phone number, you don't give me your address. I don't know who you are. And sometimes they don't even leave a name. If they leave a name, still, I don't know who you are. So please, if you contact me, leave, leave some type of information so I can get back to you. I'm trying. End of report.
Thank you. Mr. Gansbury.
Thank you, Mayor. Just echo the, the first couple with the movie night on the square. Place was packed. Uh, the Parks and Recreation did a fantastic job. Uh, Service Department was down there helping out too. Everybody that was involved, great job. Thank you. Mike, a couple of things for you. I'd like to, uh, first of all, say Button Road got paved and I know they've been waiting a long time for that. Spoke to a couple of residents and, uh, they're very happy that it finally got paved.
There's a couple of streets that we're getting ready to do.
Yes, there's one, uh, one, one street that we are looking at. We have to have a meeting regarding Tudor, which was on the initial list. There's some concern as far as the narrowness of that road, so we may not be able to do that. I should know later this week. The machines that they have to use for this is, is huge. It's substantial. So we'll have a decision there and then, uh, later tonight, council will be voting on, um, palper in our.
Thank you. Mayor mentioned, uh, primary voting tomorrow, just so everybody knows, some of the wards have switched voting locations. As it stands for tomorrow, Ward's one, two, three, and six vote at the high school. Ward's four and five vote at Glendale. Okay? Um, I believe Ward four, I think I read in the memo that Ward four will revert back to Ellenwood for the November election, but supposedly Ward five will be staying at Glendale, which kind of doesn't make sense because Glendale, Ellenwood isn't Ward five. So, but we'll see what, uh, what happens with the board of elections. So that's tomorrow. Wednesday night, weather permitting, uh, Summer Concert Series down on the square. Billy Morrison Sunset Strip with his own Smoke and Rock and Roll food truck. Uh, that's from seven to nine and we'll go through August 10th and August 17th also because we won't be meeting again until September. So August 10th, weather permitting, Tyrone's Blues Sensation, which has been postponed already, uh, with, twice, with Ms. Sharon's food truck. And then August 17th, Jewel Big Green with the Dyna Dash Mobile Kitchen Food Truck. All those events are from seven to nine and again, weather permitting. Uh, this coming Friday, August 5th, Bedford Downtown Alliance, first Friday for August. Calling all superheroes, I'm just going to read this real quick. Join Bedford Downtown Alliance, participating businesses and local area groups on a supermission to celebrate August 1st Friday and August 5th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM on the Commons. Don, your favorite cape and superhero costume, if you have one. For chances to win prizes and get certificates to downtown businesses, use your superhero skills to find clues to the scavenger hunt on the Commons to win more prizes. So hope to see you again, weather permitting. It looks like some rain maybe Wednesday starting. Wednesday, Thursday throughout the, uh, the week, so hopefully we can catch a couple breaks there. Chipper service is this week, so hopefully you got on the list. If not, the next chipper service starts, uh, September 6th. Make sure you call and get on the list to get your stuff shipped. What else? And I got a couple of other things. Cleveland Pagan Pride Festival will be August 19th through the 21st on the square this year. So that's coming up in a couple of weeks. Oh, the computer recycling roundup, um, August 18th through the 31st. And that, uh, that runs from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM, no after-hours drop-offs. And they accept CPUs, monitors, keyboards, tablets, software, cell phones, and that is for Bedford residents only. Again, August 18th through the 31st, from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM at the service garage on Solon Road. And I believe that should do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Saunders.
All right. Bringing back the voting, I hope everybody has been paying attention to who's on the ballot because Bedford got gerrymandered into a different district. So we're now in the old districts that we used to be in and we've got new people running. So, uh, if you didn't pay attention and you go to vote, you're probably not going to recognize any of the names on the ballot. So, uh, you've got tonight, you have to check online to find out who's who, but, uh, it is a different bunch of people on that ballot this time. Now granted, it's only for, I believe it's three years because of the gerrymandering. They have to redo it again, but, uh, one of these days, the state will learn that, uh, the people voted twice to do away with it and they refused to do it and then they found a judge to grant it. So in any case, uh, nobody in the state level or the peers is listening to the voters. So it's still important for you to go out and vote, uh, because a lot of it's your state legislature, your state senate, uh, on the ballot there. So get out there and do your civic pride tomorrow. Uh, quick question from Mike. We're going to be voting on the new water lines on Ennis and Harriman later in this meeting, especially Ennis. Are we going to close the road because that has sight distance issues to begin with? Or are we going to try to maintain one lane of traffic? Or how the heck are we going to do that? Because we certainly can't have two-way traffic no matter what.
Correct. I think it, I, I wouldn't want to give an answer this evening. I'd have to, if approved, we would have a pre-con meeting and then we would determine that at the pre-construction meeting. Um, and at all those meetings, we do bring in Pete Police and Fire and we talk about those types of things. Um, I would agree, there's not going to be room for two-way traffic. Um, I think the goal would be to try to maintain at least one way, but it'd be too early for me to, to give that answer. Um, I'll know more probably in the coming weeks and have that information before it starts.
Okay, because Ennis Hill is a problem anyway because people keep parking on it. Uh, and I'm amazed we haven't had some head-ons over there because you can't see anything if it's on the hill in one direction or the other. And if somebody pulls around the parked cars, it's bad enough. Uh, construction's going to be, uh, an issue anyway. So hopefully the one way will be down the hill and not up the hill if they do do it. So I just bring that up. Harriman, the, at least you got sight distance on Harriman, but, uh, I just bring that up this point. But I just bring that up this point. Turney Road, we got the grant on that. I know it's probably too early in the engineering. But that road, when it was originally designed, actually had the joints cut in the asphalt from the concrete. I would hope that they would do that again because that's one of the reasons why that 21-year-old pavement has held up as well as it has. Because it keeps reflective cracking from going all over the place. So I would hope that it's looked at again for this time, too. So unfortunately, I don't know if they're going to do Maple Section, too, because Maple Section had issues before ours. That's the one that really needs it. Oh, well. Now, the concerts, when they were run by the Chamber of Commerce, they always started a half an hour earlier, starting in August, because it starts getting dark. So by 9 o'clock in August, it is dark outside. And seniors will have a hard time maneuvering back and forth when it gets dark. I noticed everything's still listed from 7 to 9. By the time you get to the end ones in August, it's really going to be dark. So I know it may not be feasible to change the times right now, but in the future, we may want to consider that again. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Spinks.
Well, we have a very special birthday in the building. The person that's shaking her head in the middle, our fearless leader, happy, happy birthday to him. He thought he was going to get out and celebrate because he had a council meeting, but I wouldn't let him. He did not turn down the chocolate cake that I brought to him, that's for sure. So happy birthday there.
Thank you.
As Jeff mentioned, the flea market, we're calling it the outdoor bazaar of flea market because we don't just have used items. We also have some local artisans that set up with used things. So it is each year, Chris Sweet has just done a phenomenal job, or it's one of the fundraisers for the Bedford Historical Society. And she just does a phenomenal job every year. She adds to it, and it seems to get bigger and bigger every year. So that's August 13th on Bedford Commons. It starts at 9 o'clock. I did notice that there is no stop time. I think we usually stop around one or two, something like that. There wasn't a time. So people are selling. I think she keeps it open. Everybody else kind of touched on last Friday night with the movies with the wreck department. The, again, the Bedford Historical Society wants to thank the wreck department because having that movie, the free movie, it really helped us with our popcorn sales. We had a lady came up with all her, she had all her grandkids, and she has nieces and nephews. And she was talking about how nice it was because she couldn't, you know, she said, I make a good living, she said, but I can't afford to take all those kids to the movie and buy popcorn, she said. So she came up and bought 20 bags of large popcorn. And then she gave us a donation. So I never want to see popcorn again. I started at 6:30 and I did not stop popping. I have injuries on me from the kernels because I was literally, as I was filling up bags, I was putting more popcorn in there, and it was literally popping as I was scooping. And a lot of fun was had, but it was so cool to see the little kids dressed up like the characters of the movie. And when the parts of the movie would come and they'd start singing. Everybody, when I finally got done, it was close to 10 o'clock, I went out and was waiting for someone to walk me to my car because it was really dark over by the Historical Society. Everybody was singing the songs, the parents and the kids. And it was just, it was so neat. And that's just a little thing, I was just sitting there thinking, this is what makes us different, and this is what makes this home, is to have that. And kudos to Mike Malice, the wreck department and all that for thinking always, because the wreck department just doesn't get enough appreciation of what they do and the things that they bring. But it's all about, you know, families. And it was nice to see, like you said, young, old, bigger kids, little kids. I saw a couple of couples that came to watch it that didn't have kids. They came over, you know, they don't live there anymore, but they used to, and they said, this is so cool. This is just, and it just makes you appreciate what we have, which we have a lot. While I'm thinking, big kudos, and I was glad to be involved with the Bedford Garden Club. Did our Bedford Beauties Awards, and I was lucky enough to be one of the judges, and we wore three. Just beautiful, beautiful houses with just all the time, and I was honored to get one myself. It's that braggy, right? And I know I've really worked really hard. It sounds silly just saying, you know, you get a sign, you do a lot of work. I don't do it just for that, but it's nice to get one. But kudos to everybody, all the yards. If you get a chance, pay attention to these signs. And kudos to one of our members that redesigned and made our signs a little bit brighter, easier to read. So thanks to Dot, she's out there sitting, she helped. There was a lot of work went into this. We have committees, and it was, it really went good. We had scores of how we determined who was going to win or not. So was really glad to be a part of that. Mike, thanks for touching on the trash and the speeding because I could scratch that off my list that was on my complaining list. But I do notice, I am going to say a little bit about the trash, noticing a lot more broken bottles. It is getting really bad. I've started carrying like a little tray thing and a whisker to try to get it off because, I mean, you've got people on the sidewalks. I don't know if it's just people speeding by and they know they're alcohol bottles still. It's again, that's such a problem because if they're throwing out alcohol bottles, it means they're drinking and they're driving. So, and thanks for looking into some stuff with the speeding stuff. It's still bad, the trash thing, but thank you for some of the, doing the research on some of the items. I've noticed, I don't know if on there was, I've noticed a lot, I mainly pick up trash in Ward 1 because it takes me a lot of time to just go down the streets. By the bus station, by the bus stops and stuff, is that one of the areas that we're thinking about putting?
Yes.
Yeah. And I think the park of recreation, because they're a little bit more in the summertime. Green Crawl Park was a problem, and now those guys are getting at the, summer work is getting at. Thanks for the residents on, that had the dead trees on their tree lines. They are so, so happy. So thanks for getting that. They did a real good job of getting those down. Residents are happy with Cresswell being repaid. So thank you to the guys for doing that. I want a special thank you also with people moving out. It's becoming a problem of every summer, one of us usually complains about, people move out, they move out on the weekend. Trash doesn't pick up to say like Wednesday or Thursday. They take everything that they're not going to take with them, and they just throw it out on the tree line. So sometimes it'll be there from Friday or Saturday all the way to Wednesday, and then you have to look at it. Sometimes they get lucky and pickers come by and people collect, they'll find something lacking, and it'll be gone and stuff. But last week had a big red leather torn-up sofa thrown off in the dump in the middle of the night because I was, I was late. I'm usually sometimes out this late doing ward checks. At 8:30, it wasn't there. By 8 o'clock the next morning, there was a big couch set up on the empty lot at the end of Green Crawl, and the trash didn't pick it up. So all I had to do was just, I sent a picture to Debbie, and she called Clint, and it was gone by the new time. So thank you for our service, guys. I don't know why the trash wouldn't pick it up. But just a big, I know it's their job, but those guys, they make us, when people call and they thank me, and I was like, well, I'm just the messenger. You need to thank these guys that do the actual work to get those things done. So really appreciate it. Mike, also another one is, and then while this is your ward, but for trucks, there must have been 20 trucks up at the old Target, and there was more still. They're still parking on the, near the fence over in the old Walmart. They're using it. And this weekend, there was a camper trailer out there. And it's just, yeah, it just doesn't look good. And I know that you've reached out and you've talked to them, but it's the property owner needs to do that. It just doesn't look good. It just doesn't look good at all. Um, let's see. That's end of my complaints. End of report.
Thank you. Mr. Janudis.
Thank you. A lot of good things going on in the city. And people are very appreciative of all the events, all the people who make that happen. This is a little bit of a different note here. This is a time of year, is a glorious time for many of us with home gardens, as the first tomatoes are becoming ripe. In my household, we don't use store-bought tomatoes. There's nothing better than what you can grow yourself. Not really very many, but several people continue to inquire about backyard chickens for fresh eggs. And I believe it may be time for us to reconsider the current prohibition. I'm told Garfield Heights is the latest municipality to allow them now. I fully appreciate people's concerns and reservations with respect to potential nuisance. But this is something becoming very popular nationwide as more and more people consider their own health in relation to what they eat and their connection to where their food is coming from and to enjoy more wholesome lifestyles. Frankly, very few people will even do this. I believe there's also a much bigger issue at stake now. The times are changing. It was reported 2.3 million Ohioans seek food assistance. I'm told the lineup for the last food pickup at the library stretched five blocks. For the first time in recent history, we have witnessed empty store shelves and the impact of disrupted supply chains. Our beloved Bedford Auto Mile has not even had new cars to sell for an extended period of time. Who would have thought that? I believe local food sources are an imperative for our well-being into the future. Presently, our food comes from on average 1,500 miles away. Moreover, the quality of our food is diminishing to a point of our poor health. Healthcare costs are bankrupting society. Why should our government prohibit its citizens from producing their own pure, unadulterated, nutrient-dense food on their own land with their own hands? Some things from the past are worth preserving for the good of our community as we face a very uncertain future and look to the things we can do to help our families. Thank you. End of report.
Thank you. Mr. Lou Hardy. Out of blast tonight, everything else has pretty much been said here. I want to thank the Rotary Club, the Ripper Off was a success. It was pretty crowded the two times, two nights I was down there. So kudos to them for having a great weekend weather-wise, and I'm sure they prospered from it, did very well. Voting again is my Ward 3 will be at the high school. A lot of things have already been said here. I got a problem, Mike, with, there's too many cars parked on the front lawns again, and they're all over the place. And police officers need to start getting them off the yards. That's just, they drive by these houses, or at least they better be driving by these houses. But they need to start getting these people off the lawns. And I'm tired of calling them in. I shouldn't have to call that in. So, and if there's somebody parked on the street, they need to be getting a ticket late at night if they're not taking their cars off the streets. Just too much of that's going on again. And I don't know why, but especially the cars on the front yards, that just, talk about something that looks bad for your city. I go through Maple Heights, half their city's got cars on the front lawn. Well, they don't care. Well, this city needs to care more about that because it just doesn't look good. And I'm going to start really complaining about it. Let's see here. Well, I guess everybody else, everything else was pretty much said except for happy birthday, 50th birthday to our mayor, and that's it. Thank you. And let's just move along. Before we get into new business, I'm going to need a motion to remove item L from the agenda. There was a procedure error with that. It should have went to our work session prior to the regular agenda, so we'll direct that next month. So I have a motion to remove that, item L from the agenda. Asbury, second by Smith. Call the roll, please.
Cochee?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance number 10,000, 001-22.
Authorizing the approval of architectural and engineering fees to G D P Group for its services regarding design, bidding, and permitting, and construction administration costs associated with the renovation of the pool house in the city of Bedford and declaring an emergency.
I have a motion for suspension. Spinks, second by Lou Hardy. Call the roll, please.
Cochee?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Saunders, second by Smith. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. These are the fees for the engineering, as it stated in the ordinance, for the design work and the bidding work, which we're preparing to go out in the coming weeks. If you recall, we were awarded a grant, two grants actually, up to $200,000, which will go towards the renovation of the pool house, which is the original structure from 1964.
Call the roll, please.
Cochee?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Ordinance number 10,000, 002-22.
Authorizing the approval of engineering fees to G D P Group for its services regarding design and construction administration costs associated with the 2022 Road Improvement Program in the city of Bedford and declaring an emergency.
And just for the record, G P D Group is our city engineer group that contracts with the city. Can I have a motion for suspension? By Spinks, second by Janudis. Call the roll, please.
Cochee?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Asbury, second by Smith. Mike?
Similar to the previous ordinance, this is authorizing the fees associated with the 2022 Road Improvement Program and the design work and everything else. Done Button Road already. Hopefully with the approval of the next ordinance will be added to Halper Darlington, Cresswell, and potentially Tudor.
Call the roll, please.
Cochee?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Ordinance number 10,000, 003-22.
Ordinance number ten thousand zero zero three dash twenty-two. Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Angelo Benedetti, Inc. for asphalt resurfacing, uh, recycling, I should say, and declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension by Smith, second by Saunders. Call the roll, please.
Cochee?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Fluharty, second by Spinks, excuse me, Spinks. Uh, Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. As previously mentioned, part of the road program will be to include helper Ann Darlington uh, in this uh, twenty twenty-two program. We did a few weeks ago go out to bid for South Park and concrete repairs over on Palm Meadow. Uh, the bids were astronomical. Uh, we actually internally and at the recommendation of our engineering firm, uh, we denied those bids. Uh, we then reached out to Benedetti, Inc., which does provide the uh, surface recycling, uh, which is a sole source provider of this type of resurfacing. We just did that on Button Road. We asked them to provide us with some additional quotes. Um, the last meeting, uh, we touched on some of this. This meeting with some of the funds that we have remaining, we'd like to go ahead and do helper Ann Darlington this year.
And what's nice, uh, Benedetti is a local Bedford company. And if you haven't seen their machine that they designed and built and created, it rips up the asphalt in the front and in the back, it lays down a new layer. It's really something to watch, so. Uh, that's kind of cool. But it's good that it's a local that we can utilize here. Uh, call the roll, please.
Cochee?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Ordinance number ten thousand four dash twenty-two.
Authorizing a contract with National Pump and Process, Inc. for refurbishing the main drive units on the primary settling tank collectors at the wastewater treatment plant and declaring an emergency.
I have a motion for suspension by Janutus, second by Spinks. Uh, call the roll, please.
Cochee?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Motion for third and final. Saunders, second by Asbury. Uh, Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. As mentioned in the ordinance, this is to address, to address the main uh, drive units uh, down at the wastewater plant in the primary settling tank. There's multiple drive units. We've refurbished one previously. Um, there's two remaining. Uh, out of those two remaining, uh, these are approximately thirty-six years old. Uh, this is not a emergency situation yet. Um, but if we don't address them, it will soon become an emergency situation. Um, obviously, there's uh, the potential for the bearings to fail and then it would be a, an issue. Uh, so what we're trying to do is be proactive. We want to get a second one of these refurbished. We did receive three quotes. Um, based on those quotes, uh, we recommend going to National Pump and Process based on the price point and the quality of the work that they do.
Thank you. Questions? Call the roll, please.
Cochee?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Ordinance number ten thousand five dash twenty-two.
Authorizing a contract with Delta Industrial Painting Company, Inc. for the painting of light and traffic poles in the city, including Hemisphere Court, and declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension by Janutus, second by Spinks. Call the roll, please.
Cochee?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Motion for third and final. Saunders, second by Smith. Uh, Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the street light poles, the white street light poles that are in Tinkers Creek Commerce Park are city-owned. They are our responsibility. Uh, they're showing significant rust along all of those. Those were installed in roughly two thousand five, two thousand six. Similarly, throughout downtown, the streetlights, um, the light poles, um, those ones, the black and green ones, uh, over time, they've just deteriorated. You see at the base due to the road salt. Uh, what we'd like to do is follow the construction that's taking place now. Uh, we'd like to go ahead and get all of these repainted, um, cleaned up, uniformed, and then obviously, uh, next spring, the roadway will be done and downtown will, will look lovely.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Cochee?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Ordinance number ten thousand six dash twenty-two.
An ordinance to levy assessments for people who, who haven't paid their water bills in the city of Bedford and declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension by Saunders, second by Asbury. Call the roll, please.
Cochee?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Fluharty, second by Spinks. Uh, Mike? Where do you want it?
Yes, this is water assessments that we do twice a year. These are for those, those owners that were tenants that don't pay their bills for at least sixty days. And so we would place that in their tax bill. Um, this one will go on, it's due to the county in September and will not be on the bills till the bills come out in end of November, beginning of December.
Thank you. Questions? Call the roll, please.
Cochee?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Ordinance number ten thousand seven dash twenty-two.
Also to levy assessments for removal of weeds, tall grass and trees on various lots in the city of Bedford after being told to do it, the owners to do it themselves during the year twenty twenty-two and declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension, Fluharty, second by Janutus. Call the roll, please.
Cochee?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Motion for third and final. By Smith, second by Saunders. Um, genuine.
Sure. This is also an assessment for those that haven't paid for, this is for grass cuttings that are, these were done last year and will be assessed this year. The county only allows us to place this on the tax bill one time per year and now is the time, so these will go on and of course, in the end of November or December.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Cochee?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Ordinance number ten thousand eight dash twenty-two.
Amending ordinance number ninety-nine seventy-four dash twenty twenty-two. Authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Bedford Fighter Fighters Union governing, pertaining to lateral transfers and declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension by Asbury, second by Saunders. Call the roll, please.
Cochee?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Motion for third and final. By Fluharty, second by Spinks. Uh, Mike?
This memorandum of understanding is gonna be an amendment to the C B A agreement that we agreed to and passed with the local, I believe at the end of twenty twenty. It basically just touches on lateral transfers, seniority, step rates where they come in at. Um, if you recall, our last hire within the fire department, we adjusted and rent the lateral transfer route with the recommendation of civil service. Typically, in the past, we've always hired off of a test. Um, with lateral transfers, we do bring an individual on based off experience at a level two, step two. Um, so that addresses this. We spoke with the local and the union, came to an agreement. We would just like this to be amended and attached to that C B A that was previously approved.
Call the roll, please.
Cochee?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Ordinance number ten thousand nine dash twenty-two. Also to approve engineering service, engineering fees to G D P group for its services regarding design and construction administration costs associated with the Ennis Inherement Waterline Improvement Project and declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension by Fluharty, second by Janutus. Uh, call the roll, please.
Cochee?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Uh, motion for third and final. By Smith, second by Asbury. Uh, Mike?
This is for engineering fees similar to the road program in the pool house. This will be for the water line improvements that'll be taking place on Ennis Inherement, should Cutsall approve.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Cochee?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
I'm saying.
Ordinance number ten thousand ten dash twenty-two. Authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Fabrizi Trucking and Paving Company, being the lowest responsive and responsible bidder regarding the Ennis Inherement Waterline Improvement Project and declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension, Saunders, second by Asbury. Call the roll, please.
Cochee?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Motion for third and final. By Fluharty, second by Spinks. Uh, Mike?
Since for, uh, as previously mentioned, the water line replacements that we are recommending for Ennis Inherement are, uh, we previously did a bid opening. Uh, Fabrizi was the lowest and most responsive bidder. Our engineering estimate was roughly one point two million for this project. Uh, low bid came in at one point three million eighty-seven. Um, our recommendation is to move forward with Fabrizi and get these water lines replaced.
Call the roll, please.
Cochee?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion?
Yes, sir. Can we get a motion to approve the planning commission's decision to approve Swarg L T D's proposal to revamp the existing service station in Canopy from a Sunoco service station to a B P service station at ten North Field Road in Bedford, Ohio?
And this is a simple yes or no?
Sir.
Uh, yes, you agree with the planning commission's approval of the project? And no, if you don't approve of it. Call the roll, please. Did they have, oh, I'm sorry. Wow, need a motion for that. Wait. Uh, Janutus, second by Fluharty. Sorry, now you can call the roll.
Cochee?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
And now it comes to that portion of the meeting for hearing of citizens. If you wish to speak, please come forward, state your name, your address, and your comment.
John Sullik.
Well, if you go to the podium so they can get it on the recording, thank you.
John Sullik, S U L I K, seven O, Berwyn. I have a drainage issue. For three years, I've been trying to get something done. Three years ago, the city worker looked at it and he said, "I'll tell my boss." Two years ago, the city worker looked at it and he said, "I'll tell my boss." Earlier this year, the city worker looked at it and he said, "I'll tell my boss." And I said, "You tell your boss. If the city doesn't do something and somebody falls and gets injured, I will be a witness in their suit against the city." An hour later, I got a comb. Since now, the comb has sunk down into the drain. I built a retaining wall to keep my yard from sinking into the drain. I built it pretty tall in the back and a dam in the back. I put edging all the way around the back and the side. I backfilled with topsoil and I covered it with mulch. And I planted bushes. Total cost to me, twelve hundred dollars. I'm on social security. I've exhausted all my funds. I had hand surgery, so I can't physically do anything with this. And this rain continues to wash away the soft soil. So, if you look at the size of this hole, if the animal warden fell in it, he would have a hard time getting out. Just to give you an idea of the size of that hole. I'm not a fan of voicemail, but I called Donald Saunders and left a message to please call me about a drainage problem. And he did not return my call. I called a week later Michael Malice and left a voicemail and said, "Please contact me about this drainage problem," and he did not call me back. So this is my last ditch effort. Now, if you want to know how this happened, I would be glad to explain it to you. Would you like to know? This was a brain drain. The houses from Avalon and Berwyn, backyards came down this drain and into the store. And Stumpy bought the third house over on Avalon and was in a rehab it and it rained and there was water in the backyard. And he says, "Who the hell is responsible for this drain? I'll go to City Hall." Well, he came back and he says, "Well, I'll take care of it myself." So he took his roof drains and put them down into this rain drain and covered them over with topsoil. And then the guy next door was getting water, so he put his rain drain down into this rain drain, covered it over with topsoil. So I don't know what happened further on, but when it rains, you get a torrent, a torrent of water that's washing away all the soft soil. And I'm afraid it's gonna undermine my retaining wall. And there's also a light pole there that is by nature bending toward the street. And if you wash away the soft soil under that, I don't know what could happen next, but I, I think that something needs to be done and I cannot do it.
I'm taking it it's right by the street?
I'm sorry?
The hole, same hole is right by the street, near the street?
It's, it's, no, it's between the light pole and the drain.
Just to confirm, did you say your address was seventy? What was your address?
Seven O, Berwyn.
Seven, okay, seven O.
But the drain is on Burkshire, right by the light pole. I would like someone other than a city worker to tell me, "Yes, we can do something and we will," or "Don't bother us anymore." Either way.
I'll come, I'll come out to your property in the next day or two, but before, if, if you don't mind waiting till afterwards, I'd like to get your phone number, if that's possible.
Sure.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Sabrina Future and I'm at fifteen Charles Street. Um, first, I would just like to thank the city and the rec department for an event that I attended for the first time. It was called the, uh, the movie for the seniors. I'm a senior now, you know, I turned sixty like. And so I'm a senior now and the name of it was Summer of Soul. And it was very enlightening and educational. I had never even heard of this event taking place for the, yeah, and it happened when the Woodstock and they said it was a hundred miles away. So it was very enlightening to find out some of my history from the city. You know, I call you all the time about what we're going to do for Juneteenth and MLK Day other than just being off. So thank you for this event. It was very good. Not that much attended, but it was the first and it was good. So I want to thank you for that. The second thing I wanted, I had a question, I was going to ask, oh, I was thinking you about Union Street, the repavement, because I literally avoided that for months because it would tear up the car. And so I'm thankful for that and grateful. But I had a question when I was hearing about the rebuilding of the bridge. Now, does that want to tear the street up?
Not, not the street. There will be some approach slabs that have to get put in as you get towards the bridge, but, but Union will be, Union won't be touched.
Okay.
It's just the bridge portion and it'll be closed before, it'll be closed actually at Egbert and the Parkway and then it'll also be closed, I believe, down by Taylor.
Okay, thank you. The next thing is trash. I know there's an issue with trash all over. I'm just very disappointed on the east side because when I go on the west side, it's not like that. I don't know what it is, but I live on Charles and one of the reasons I picked that street was because it was a park. Before I came here, I was in Maple, I was on a park. And unfortunately, interstate, it's a very nice park, but there's no trash can there, there's no picnic bench there. I literally took a picture today. There's a young man named Cameron, he's handicapped in a wheelchair. And he has Mr. Melvin, who's his caretaker, who they go up to the park and Mr. Melvin has to take his chair. Not only is he caretaker for a handicapped person in our ward, but he has to take his own chair. That's disheartening to me. I don't know where my taxes are going, but if we can't get a picnic table and a trash can, I would be willing to purchase it. Because I was having Bible clubs at that park. That's how I got to know the kids in the neighborhood. They're teenagers now and now there's other young kids. I can't even connect with them because we have no place to sit. I know there are issues they say going on, but I've worked with the YMCA and ran a teen core program with the city of Bedford Heights and Strongsville and it was very effective. We taught our children how to be leaders. And if we have an issue in our city that we're thinking of taking away basic picnic tables and trash cans because we have issues with our kids, I'm willing to volunteer on a committee to resolve this. Because taking away a picnic table and trash cans is not the issue and it's not the solution. I'm very upset because I talked about this last summer. And when I see that, I can show you the picture of the handicapped young man and his caretaker. We should be ashamed of ourselves to allow our residents to, to live like that. So that's my biggest issue.
Excuse me, before you go on.
I can show you.
The city manager just mentioned about putting trash cans out. I take them.
I know.
Salt that. So we could look into this.
You were doing a park, a park assessment of what needs to happen.
But there's no picnic table. We can't even sit there.
All of that stuff.
The kids at the daycare don't even come there no more.
Yeah, we have a new rec director in.
I spoke with him and he was supposed to reach out to you guys and he didn't get back with me, so that's why I came. Because he didn't get back with me.
He's looking at all this stuff.
Okay.
I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, no, that's, that's fine. It's just, makes me want to cry. The veterinarian building, it is deteriorating. Windows are gone, the bricks are gone, and now we have a, a group of bats. What's the plan for that building? Because when a bat came around to our property and then the next night, there were tons of bats flying. I don't know if it's from that building, but when I look through there, first it's a safety hazard because that's how people get, you know, bad news happen in those kind of buildings. What's the plan for that building?
I'd have to check with our building department on the status of that.
It needs to be, it needs to be demolished because there was a buyer at one time and I guess it didn't go well. He realized it wasn't a good investment and it has been nothing but a headache. Then for the hospital, first of all, I'm going to say I'm a believer. I believe in prayer. My mother passed away in that hospital, March eighth. And I always wondered about the care because not only did I lose my mother, but the, the way I was treated, the funeral home, they even complained. I have a saying, good money, all money is not good money and all care is not good care. If a hospital like that, how they thirty days, really? That tells you the integrity of these people. So if God closed one door, I'm hoping and praying that you guys will pray with me that he'll open another. My mother was a miracle through Cleveland Clinic of heart attack. But UH was there? I don't know, but that's definitely going to be a prayer for our city because I personally had an episode that was not good. And if they told us in thirty days, who needs those kind of people to run a facility like that? Because hopefully what happened to me and maybe others will not happen again. And I just wanted to know, who makes the decisions on moving the voting places? Who makes those decisions?
The Board of Elections.
The Board of Elections.
Right, we also had a problem at Ellenwood. Mike, you can touch on that.
Yeah, the Board of Election makes those decisions. The only thing that we did, we did share our input this year regarding Ellenwood. We had concerns with all the precincts voting at Ellenwood, the ones that were scheduled to vote there because we had a number of programs taking place and then the summer camp was there. To have all that activity there and then to have all the youth there, we like to make sure that for safety reasons, we asked them not to have that at Ellenwood. And they agree with that and thought that for safety purposes, because there was a youth camp that utilized that facility, that it'd be best to relocate for this August and then obviously that one precinct will be going back. But they're, they make the ultimate decision.
Got you. I would just suggest that we kind of get it stable where we, it's hard enough to get people to vote when you're moving.
Yeah, this is just a one-time deal, then it'll go back to where it was.
Okay. And let me see, I think, oh, there are dead trees on Union Street, on private property, none on the tree line, the city line. Those are fine, but it's one huge one on Union Street when you get before Broadway. I walked there and it's like, this is scary. I don't know how you guys handle it, but something needs to be done because it is huge and it's not only, it's, it's eroding from the bottom. So it's definitely going to either tip over into the street or somebody's going to get hurt, so.
You don't have a chance to know the address? If not, we can.
I'll call you because I walked there and I'll call you and give it to you.
We'll take a look as well, but if you do happen to see it, leave me a message.
Okay.
Get in touch with me.
Okay, I sure will. And then the last thing, when he was talking about holes, the daycare in Northfield, they resurfaced that parking lot and they did a nice job and for a while, the sidewalk was horrible. I don't know if the city cleaned it up or whom, but they did a nice job cleaning it up. But there are two holes. I don't know what they're for, but if you look down, they go down, they're like this, this big. And they had caps on them and there's two of them that don't have caps on them. I don't know the effect of that, but I know it needs to be capped. And that's pretty much it. Thank you, Mr.
Janudis?
Yes. Because food is definitely a concern for me with all going on, so I appreciate that information and thank all of you for your service. And I don't know, we just need to be more compassionate people and handle that situation at that park so that those people can just enjoy the park. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Jay Watson, forty Berwyn Drive. I like what she had to say. She had a lot of good and you had a kind heart in terms of how you express your thoughts. I appreciate it. I need to do it quick.
He can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
You're far enough away if you want to take the mask off. It's up, up to you, so we can hear you better.
Okay, is that better now?
Yes.
Okay, very good. A comment I heard from the council this evening, listening to members, I think we all hear often, and that is, it just looks bad for our community. We're already talking about the cars. I have come to talk about the cars. And what I appreciate what you had said, and I heard you say it before, is that what is the police doing in my community? I mean, this is an issue that keeps coming up and coming up. If I could drive by there and see all these cars, what are the police doing? Just drive by and say, "This is just okay." Something needs to be done. I thought the police, that's who we pay to do these things. They take action where they see something violation. I spoke at the last meeting and this takes on another subject that was speaking out by Mr. Malice earlier about signage in terms of trying to control traffic. We got enough signs out here to tell you what the traffic, what's, what's going on to track. I don't think we need any more signage. We need police officers going to enforce the signage. I don't need any more signage. I don't need any more recordings of how fast people are going out there and it's flashing. We need something that says, "When you come into Bedford, like you said, hey, we don't want to see cars in your yard." You're going to see police officers going to enforce the law. I don't see police officers in my community. I used to, maybe fifteen years ago, see them going up and down the street. I don't see them. I, and I don't mind as a citizen calling in and saying, "I see a car parked in the yard, I see this." I don't mind doing that, but if it proves me, what are the police doing? It's so obvious. If it wasn't a whole lot of it, I could say, "Okay, the police not, I can see where they don't see it." But this is a ton of cars in a lot of people's yards in the front. This is so obvious and I have yet to see police officers stop and do something. Now, maybe they are, I don't see it. I have not heard neighbors saying they're witnessing. I'm just saying, we pay the police to do their job. I think we all agree, this is something that should hold, be the party responsibility. Unless someone says otherwise, I guess we all agree with that. My next thing is about the hospital closing. I did not hear, but maybe it was stated. What does it impact on our taxes?
Like mentioned, it's just a preliminary, quick look, it's around nine hundred dollars a dollar a year.
Okay. I think it's probably, although you got deep prayers, I think it's a done deal. Very seldom like this is reversed. I also have concern that we have a metal facility that's been closed on Rockside across from the plaza. Just empty building, folks, been there for a while. When we talk about what's happening and I understand your comment about what is happening in Maple Heights, we don't want that happening here. Let me reassure you, I have gone to other council meetings of some other communities and they do the same thing, talking about Bedford, about what they see is happening in Bedford. They say, "Hey, we don't want that happening to our community." I'm not thinking that it's appropriate nor is it appropriate to say what's happening in Maple Heights. But people see and they have a opinion. I think Maple, I think Bedford does a lot of wonderful things, but I am behoove for a lot of things. We just seem to just say, "It's just business as usual and we're just going to let it keep on going." Or we don't have the money to put someone out there to deal with. But yet citizens come forth and say, "This is a concern." And we keep coming around and coming around with the same conversation. We need them to take some action. I mean, we've got buildings around here that have been empty for a long time. But all amount, in my opinion, what I read, is going in the wrong direction. And for us to rely upon all amount of being a big anchor to this community when we can clearly see that all industry is going electric and all industry and how they sell cars is online more and more, we better rise up in terms of what we think is, what we're going to be anchoring our businesses around here. I don't hear anyone talking about those things. We need to be talking about being proactive. We're proactive on roads, on roads. All right, I think that's good, but we need to be proactive about business, period. You spoke about chickens. That's a great idea, wholesale, growing tomatoes. We already got too many neighbors around here that are going to take care of their dogs, so we have chickens running around here and, and kids letting them loose. You know, I think it's a great idea, but we don't have the people to monitor and make sure this is something that we can live with because we, we make people responsible. And we feel when we make people responsible, we got another headache where someone says, "Well, you know what, there's that Bedford community over there and it's just like what you expect. They got wild chickens running across the street and, you know, I just got hit going with a car the other day." I can hear it. I can hear it, believe me, I can hear it. But it just concerns me. It's a great idea, but I don't think we have a, a foundation for making that happen.
Let me ask you this, if you, if you had to start, do all over again, would you allow dogs and cats in the community?
Well, I like to see that.
If you had to start all over again, like if dogs were not legal in Bedford, would you, would you be opposed to having dogs because they, some people don't take care of them and they bark or whatnot?
I don't have a big concern about a dog barking. I have a big concern when you have dogs just running loose. And I see that still happening. I, in my observation, it appears that some of these owners of dogs care more about their dogs than their kids. That's their choice, but that's just my observation. Also my observation, and I hear arguments in that dogs must be on leash, but cats no because they might put them in danger being on the leash. I got cats in my neighborhood, they're just running all over the place. And to me, I don't want cats in my yard, nor do I want dogs in my yard. I don't hate cats, but that's not my responsibility. And those who own them don't want to be responsible. They're just going all about the place. So I ask you a question, yeah, it's a question of being responsible. Just like having a car. I don't mind people on a car, but I don't think it needs to be in the front yard. You know, it could be loud and that may be obstruction, right? You see a dog barking, but let's look at what the issue, the issue is if a car is parked in the front yard, I'm expecting a police officer to stop and address it. And I'm not seeing that. You know, we're talking about having report, like track, you know, counting how fast people are going. I want to see a report showing that the police officer is stopping and making these, these issues known. Give me those kind of reports, say from last year, we're showing police officers are tagging X amount of people parking in the yard. Give me those kind of reports. That's what I want to see. That is showing that we are really addressing. Putting a sign out there showing we're tracking how fast people are going, I couldn't care less. I can tell you how fast they're going. They're going too damn fast. And there's no police officer out there to deal with it. I'm, I'm up here at Rockside Road in Northfield and I'm clearly seeing where the sign says, "No right-hand turn on red." They make a right-hand turn on red because people are making rules as they go, as they feel it meets their needs. I don't need to tell you that over and over again. What I want to hear is that we got someone out there to deal with it. And I'm not hearing that.
Just one minute, you asked for the number. It was two hundred and thirty-six parking citations that were given this year to date, street or on the lawn.
How was that compared to last year?
I can pull those figures, I'm just looking at the year to date today. So there are tickets being issued. If some, if we respond, we can't force someone right then, "Hey, get it off the yard right now," but we can issue a ticket. So as far as on-street parking and parking on the lawns, it was two hundred and thirty-six, so that's in six months. So that is some data and I can provide it at the next meeting if you want to come, I can share you. So that is some data. Um, and I can provide at the next meeting, if you wanna come, I can share you from the previous years.
I will say-
And, and, and we could, and maybe we can do better. I'm not saying we can't, but I, 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 I do wanna provide data that the police are doing what is, I'm not saying you're saying that they're not, that they are, they are issuing tickets. And they are responding accordingly to, to complaints, if it's animals, if it's, um, I think it was, uh, a hundred and thirty-one, um, stops was just last week as far as regular traffic. So there are, you know, and that's five, six people on the road.
I'm not wanting to have it misunderstood on my part that you don't think that I think that they aren't doing anything. I'm just saying there's opportunities to do a whole lot more.
Fair.
That's what, that I wanna clear that up. Because when I'm seeing the frequency of it, it's questioning where are they? Now, maybe they're someplace or doing sometime at night, like, like you were saying. If this car's parked on the street at night, overnight, and no one's tagging them, and I see a car over there, then I walk up here and I go over here and pick up the phone and I call the police and say, hey, listen, this car's been out for three days. And I have seen that. What I would like to see is, okay, show me some data. Is it going up over the last five years? I hear data here on other things talking about how there's either increase or decline. Give me some data in terms of the police responding to cars being parked on the street. I'm happy that they did over two and some like this year, but is that an increase over the last five years? Are we seeing a trend? Maybe it might be related to the pandemic, people staying home more and not going to work? I mean, there's a whole lot of things here we can associate with. That is good. I don't know what the trends are. Um, backyard garden, there's a lot of, a lot of opportunities in our communities that have, to me, that's going out like gutters. I'm looking at gutters that either tore up or overcrowded with junk. I don't know where, why, where's the lack of accountability on it? But there's a lot of houses that just got gutters, just full or either tore up. Once again, it comes back, it looks bad for our community. I'm saying, we need to do something about it.
Uh, and we need people to take responsibility for themselves. That's the number one.
I agree with you.
Number one.
Uh, but you know, but just as people that should be responsible for how fast they drive on, on, on the road, if you're driving too fast, someone's gonna let you know you're going too fast. And people not taking care of their property, someone's got to be there to say, hey, listen, that is unacceptable, it's bad for our community. This is a consequence. I'm not saying I know what the consequences are. I'm not sure those people in the houses that are letting habit understand their consequences. Because it is there year after year, the same house. So I agree with you. People need to be responsible. Some people have more of a challenge trying to be responsible. I get that too. Handicap or whatever, funds or whatever. But they have to understand, you gotta be responsible. And someone has to take that initiative to say, I'm here to let you know you gotta be responsible. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
In Australia, fifty-one Elm Street. Happy birthday, Merrick. So we can all be encouraged that we were heard today and I wanted to thank you guys all for hearing us and letting us speak. Um, there's a lot of great things about Bedford. Very encouraged, Mr. Malice. Thank you for being diligent with the trash cans. Um, talked, and I appreciate that. I know our, everything takes a long time. You know, it just takes a long time, but I appreciate that you guys are out there and you're, you're doing it. And, um, the pool, we can be thankful, kids are learning how to swim. Our community offers Red Cross, um, lifeguard training and certification. Communities don't have pools, little one offering that. Raylene Jones and Bree Baden have been doing a terrific job under Mike Calhoun's direction. Um, they're dealing with, you know, how do we make people care? You know, the kids there, they're doing great, but then you get a couple of parents that are gonna flip out and swear because they won't let their kid go down the slide, or your kid can't swim. Do you really want them to go down on the slide? So people are doing a good job. You know, how, how do we make people care? You know, so appreciate that. About the chickens, we can go back and forth. People want chickens, people don't want chickens. Um, it is one of the things that the young newly-marrieds are looking for when they look for communities. They will look, there's a list of ten things, and it's one thing that the young people just having children wanna get back to the, the roots of, you know, have a chicken. Yeah, might a chicken get in our yard? Yeah, it might. We might have to shoot it out. Or, you know, maybe not. The police with the cars. Um, I know you'll deal with it and I appreciate that. Um, the last thing is, it's unfortunate that now we live in a place where, I don't think you'll remember this, but months ago, we spoke. You were, we were on the street somewhere. I saw you, you know, like very excited. You said, I just, Mike and I just got out of a meeting with the hospital. This was right after they closed Richmond Heights, I believe. And you said, they're letting us keep it. And to then be side, you know, side swiped or whatever that word is, where they come at you and just underhandedly tear the rug out from under you. It's not right, but I do believe, as our friend did, that sometimes things that we think are gonna be the worst can be turned around and we can see a blessing out of it. So that's my hope. So Bedford's still a great place to live. You guys are doing a great job and working it together. So I appreciate yous.
Thank you.
I'm Sabrina Epic. I live at five one two Bell. My concern is with the cars. When you guys wanna talk about turning road in that construction, are you going to do something about the parking on the street? And how people park in front of signs that were there that aren't there no more? Because people beforehand took them down. Also, I would like to formally introduce myself to you, Mr. Smith. I lived in Bedford all my life. I never knew, I knew Paula. But after she passed away, we were never introduced to you. I don't know who you were, nothing like that. And when you guys did the new telephone poles in the city, signs were still on the old pole, right in front of this, the new pole. The old animal warden's wife parks there. And I was just wondering if you're gonna take the old sign down and put it on the new one? Because the police were called, not the animals done.
Was, was the, was the old telephone pole?
It's still there. The new one's right next to it. The sign's still on the old pole, but she parks right in front of it.
All right, I'll, we'll take a look at it. We're not allowed to touch First Energy's poles. It's kind of a dispute that we're, actually all of the communities are dealing with them on. Um, I'll take a look at the location, Matt. If you just hang out afterwards for a minute, just, I'll, I'll chat.
Okay. And then also, I wanted to know, like, would, I know there used to be a curfew back in the day that teenagers were not allowed after eleven. And I was just wondering if that's gonna be enforced again, or if that's something you guys can look on because going back over the weekend, I was coming home and two kids were coming from Lundell School with masks on. I shone my Brits on them and one guy just gave me the hand across the face and just kept walking. Then turning the corner, there's a group of like ten or twelve of them just walking aimlessly in the street. I mean, it's not even safe to take my dogs out walking no more because we've had issues in the neighborhood. And I just wanted to know what was going to be done about it.
So something like that, I would suggest in the future, definitely call PD and we'll respond to that.
We have been, and still issues.
Do you, when was that?
Over the weekend. And then last week, my brother and my mom were walking the dogs and they had issues with people just standing in, on the sides of houses with clickers, just clicking at the dogs. And this was like eight at nine, eight, nine o'clock at night. So it's during light hours. They're just minding their business, walking the two dogs and people doing crazy things. And I don't wanna move from the city because this is a nice city, but it is going downhill. And I just wanted to know what was going to be done about it. Because I work hard. My tax dollars were told what they were supposed to go to. And I just wanna see it go to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Saying none. Motion for adjournment. They speak second by Fluharty. Call the roll, please.
Coate?
Yes.
Spinks? Yes. Nudis?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Manzberry?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Thank you all for coming. And council, uh, we'll do our picture next meeting in September sixth.